And we have two forums today, so we'll go ahead and get started. Please help yourself to coffee, courtesy of Cool Beans right over there, and find a seat. Thanks so much, everyone, for coming. We're just so excited to see you all here. My name is Laine. I'm with the Brookings Area Chamber of Commerce, and we are just thrilled to see this turnout. This is a big part of our mission, which is connecting and advocacy. So, thank you all for participating today. Big, big thank you to our season-long sponsors, right? So, these things don't just happen by accident or happen for free. Our sponsors this year are the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, Vision Brookings, and, of course, Cool Beans Coffee. So, thank you so much to those. Big thank you to city staff, especially Quayco, for being here on a Saturday. And then, another big thank you to our task force, who helps out with stuff like this. So, we have Russ Halgerson. I don't think I've seen him here today, but we also have Larry Tiedemann, Kayla Gullickson, and LeAnn Pierce. So, thank you to them. If you would like to submit a question, we have some paper slips over here. You can fill that out, hold it up. One of those task force members will grab it, and they'll bring it up here. Again, this will be recorded. So, if you have friends or family who couldn't make it today, or maybe you missed one of the answers and you want to hear it again, it will be rebroadcast on the city's channel on TV. We're also going to put it on the chamber's Facebook page early next week. So, you can definitely re-watch, share with friends and family. We're going to do school board first, and then, at 10 o'clock, we will do city council. Our format today is going to be our candidates will have three minutes for opening statements, and then, they will have one minute each per question that is asked. So, our candidates today are Cassie Jubah, Kelsey Bowman, and Terry Johnson. And we have our wonderful moderator, Mike Bartley. He came out of retirement to help us out today. So, again, thanks, everyone, for being here. I will stop talking, and we'll start here with Mike, and then, there are three-minute opening statements.
All right. Thank you very much. It's good to be here. As I look at the crowd that's present today, it's, so who's of Brookings are here? And I appreciate that. I appreciate all of you and your support for Brookings and the community over the years. We will start today with three-minute openings. I will start with Cassie.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Cassie Jubah, and I'm honored to be here today as a candidate for your Brookings School Board. I first just want to extend my gratitude to the chamber, our moderator, our sponsors, and everyone that put this on, my fellow candidates, and, of course, all of you. Your engagement in processes like this make our community strong. A little bit about me, I grew up in Yankton, South Dakota, and I moved to Brookings in 2010. I had no intention of staying in South Dakota or going into education because, as an eldest daughter, I was often in charge of looking after the younger ones and was told what a good teacher I would be. And as any good rebellious teen does, I said, "Of course, I would never do what anyone told me." But I moved to Brookings, and I fell in love with this community and found a passion in education and advocacy. Brookings became much more than a stop along the way. It became my much-beloved home. I met my husband, Adam, here, who is also an incredible educator. He teaches math at BHS and coaches the girls' soccer team. So, education is not just my career. It's very much our family's way of life. In our house, we believe the power of education can change people's lives, and I want to bring my passion and knowledge for education to the school board. My deep love of education and advocacy led me to found Play Tutoring Center. As the executive director of Play, I work and collaborate every day with students and families to provide personalized lesson plans, create opportunities for growth, advocate for them, and ensure that students have the support they need to succeed. I also have the great privilege of getting to work alongside the incredible staff at our schools, who I see are so deeply dedicated to their students. I get to see what's working well in our schools and what we need to work to improve on. I understand the challenges of our schools because I live them firsthand every day. Running a nonprofit also means that I have firsthand experience working within budgets, securing grants and funding, and ensuring we meet our goals efficiently and effectively. I know how to make tough financial decisions while keeping students and families at the center of every choice I make. I'm running for school board because I believe in using my knowledge and skills to problem-solve. I believe in deeply listening to our community, always learning, and taking action. And I believe our schools thrive when we put our students first, support our teachers and staff, and make responsible, transparent decisions with our resources. Our district is at a pivotal moment, and we need leadership that is engaged, proactive, and committed to finding solutions. I'm ready to bring my knowledge, experience, passion, and problem-solving mindset to the Brookings School Board. Today, I ask for your support and your vote, and I encourage you to stay involved, ask questions, and be part of shaping the future of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cassie. We will now allow Kelsey to do her opening comments.
All right. Good morning. My name is Kelsey Bowman. I'll echo what Cassie said. I appreciate all you coming out and being involved in this process, thanks to our moderator, our sponsors, and Cool Beans, especially for the coffee this early Saturday morning. A little bit of background about myself. I came from Granite Falls, Minnesota, to attend college here at SDSU. I moved here in 2005. I graduated in 2008 with a major in economics. From there, I went on, and I was the assistant business manager for the Brookings School District for almost seven years. In 2019, my son, Breck, was born, and I decided to resign from that position to be a stay-at-home mom. And I created my accounting business, KB Consulting, and I've been doing that ever since. And now, my son is attending kindergarten at Madera Elementary, and we office out at the Research Park, so I'm a little more part-time mom, full-time bookkeeper. I've always said that I want to be mom first, and that's what has drawn me to run for the Brookings School District. As Cassie said, we're at a very pivotal point in our education system, and from what we saw out in peer, it's at the forefront of many of the conversations, and we need people who are dedicated to putting our students and our staff first. My platform, I want to improve academic proficiency, focus on core education, fiscal responsibility. A lot of my background is in the financial aspect, and my work as the assistant business manager, I think, gives me a leg up in that atmosphere. And transparency with the public. Obviously, we can see everyone who's here involved in this process. I think we need to get more people involved, parents especially, and that's what I would commit to doing, is a voice for all parents. We need parents to have a seat at the table and to take a little accountability also. Another thing, I'm accessible and I'm present. I'm there every day at drop-off. I'm there every day at pickup. We're at bingo nights. We're at Bobcat events, and I think that's extremely important to be accessible to our stakeholders. Anyways, I appreciate you all being here, and I, unlike these two, am not an educator. I'm an accountant, and I'm short and sweet, so I will defer my time to Terry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelsey. Now, we'll allow Terry to have her three minutes.
Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. My name's Terry Johnson, and echo what my friends said up here. A big thank you to the moderator, to the chamber, Cool Beans, and all the sponsors. I currently, well, I grew up in Rapid City, and because I'm so old, I won't take you through my whole life because that would take us till 10 o'clock. I grew up in Rapid City. I attended SDSU, and from there, I went to seminary. I'm an ordained minister, been a pastor for 33 years. I am currently teaching full-time at SDSU. I teach a variety of classes. I've been teaching since 2014, and I also am currently serving three small rural congregations. I'm deeply invested in the Brookings School District. Both my mother and father-in-law were longtime educators in the district. My husband graduated from Brookings High School. All five of our children graduated from Brookings High School. Three of our children now teach in the district, and now, all of our grandchildren are students here in the district. And so, I feel, just as a way to give back, it's been always a great district. It's afforded our family wonderful opportunities, quality education. I've been on the board the last three years, and I have to tell you in all honesty, I'm a slow learner, but it has taken me three years to really understand what a school board is and what a school board isn't, what our responsibilities are and what they're not. And so, just given the knowledge and understanding what a school board is, I feel that I'm prepared and would just be honored to continue my service. I think we are on a great path. We have exciting things happening in our district, and I'd like to continue to see those vision and mission play out. So, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. We'll start with some questions. I've got one from the audience right away, and I'm going to preface it a little bit with regards to Department of Education. It's in the news recently with President Trump suggesting it be eliminated. How do you think it will affect local education if that happens? And what steps would you take to continue programs you deem necessary? And Kelsey, we'll start with you.
I had a sneaking suspicion that would come up today. You know, I'm just going to go ahead and say that I'm a firm believer in that money is best managed closest to home. I think that South Dakota knows what South Dakota learners need. It'll be a hurdle. It'll be a learning process. We'll have to work hard as a board and as a community to decide what our students need most. But a couple of things that I noted in my research with this, it's that Donald Trump, President Trump has said, "The department's useful functions will be preserved in full," talking about Pell Grants, Title I funding, and programs for students with disabilities. We need to make sure that that's not just a political statement and that that's a promise because those are very, very vital to our community. Other things to note, Governor Roden mentioned that he supports this, bringing it back to the states. A quote from Secretary of Ed Graves, "The federal government purchases a dollar's worth of regulation for a dime's worth of funding." And I believe that we better know how to handle our funds closer to home.
Thank you. Terry, do you have any comments on this question?
Yes. I think bringing it back to home sounds good, but I think what's going to keep school boards in limbo is not knowing who's going to distribute the money and who will allocate the money. Right now, that's a big question mark. We don't know if it goes to the state, who in the state is going to say, "This district gets this much, and this district gets this much." And so, as a school board, it's going to be very hard to work with budgets and monies when we don't know how much we're going to get and who's going to get this and who's going to get that. And so, I worry about that for all school boards, not just ours, because trying to navigate and know what programs we want to keep and what we, and we don't know how much money we're going to get or how is it going to be dispersed. We don't know that yet, and so, that's a big question mark that I think will cause not only limbo, but some anxiety for school boards.
Thank you. Cassie, comments?
I echo what Terry's concerns are about those funds and how they're going to be distributed and what things we can commit to. So, as a school board, we're going to have to take a very good look when we are going to expand anything, and if there's any funds we're unsure of, make sure that we're not depending on something that might not be coming. And as far as control to the states, the Department of Education doesn't decide a lot of the things that I think people think they do. School boards and states decide curriculum and things like that, so a lot of that control is already in our states. And our schools and the Department of Education has some great programs as far as researching and pedagogy and keeping best practices. So, I am concerned because, as Brookings, we've made some great steps in committing to things like science of reading, which is a structured literacy approach. Our literacy rates have been low since 1992, and science of reading is a much-improved way to approach that. And so, my concern is where research happens for those best practices so we can best serve our students.
Thank you. All right. We'll start with another question from the audience. They would like you to explain your stance on educational vouchers, and we'll start with Terry.
Educational vouchers, I am very, very happy that that did not pass because that would have taken money directly away from our budget right now. And we know, I think, in South Dakota, we struggle anyway. We are 48th in the nation for teacher pay, and so, that money would have been taken away from us. It would have been a detriment to public school system. And the other concern I had about the voucher system was the accountability piece. The monies would have gone for private schools, but there was no accountability, how it was spent, where the money was going. So, those are the two things that I didn't like about the bill and glad it didn't pass.
All right. Thank you very much. Kelsey?
My view on this is that the focus should be on why families are seeking alternatives in the first place. I believe strong public schools and school choice can coexist, and that competition can drive improvement for everyone. The main point is, public schools receive funding based on enrollment. The best way to retain funding is to ensure that we're delivering a quality education, so that's what we need to keep our focus on.
Thank you. Cassie, comments?
I, too, was glad that this didn't pass. As the Director of Play Tutoring, I work with public school students, but also kids that go to private school and are homeschooled, and I believe that families should have that choice. But public school boards are advocates for public school, and an indicator of a strong community is offering a quality, free education. Public schools legally must provide services to every student that comes through that door, and like Terry said, we already do not have enough funding to do that. We have 25% of our students in Brookings on IEPs, so we need those dollars to come to public schools because public schools take care of our kids.
All right. Thank you. The next one's kind of a long question that was submitted to the chamber, and Cassie, we're going to start with you on this one. "We've recently seen budget overruns completing the two new elementary schools, a $4 million loan, expanded programs including toddler care, and rising costs as a district adds administrative positions, all while state funding only increased 1.25%. If elected, how will you manage the expectation that board members are physically responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars?" Long question.
It's long. Thank you so much. So, we have had a lot on our plate recently. We're in a tough spot financially, but we've made really great moves, having a five-year capital outlay plan and the school board working hard towards that, also having a facilities director to keep a list of what's going on with our building so we don't have the surprises, like our very old boiler in our high school and the ever-changing conditions there. So, as a school board member, making sure that we not only listen to the community, but we have very talented administrators and people in our business office. So, making sure that we follow their lead and keep a list of those facility needs specifically and make a priority list to address those while also keeping Brookings an attractive place for teachers and staff to work in. We cannot afford to lose them, so being transparent with what funds are available and making sure that we can offer other things that make Brookings an attractive place to stay and teach and work.
Kelsey, we'll allow you to answer the question.
Well, that's kind of my specialty, the financial aspect, and I'll echo what Cassie said in the sense that transparency is key to that. We need to have these discussions. We need to get engagement from the public, and we need to utilize our community and have community input on these things. We are, as Terry stated, 48th in teacher pay. We're 17th in administrator pay. There are, there's funds there. We need to have the, we need to have the hard discussions and allocate those funds responsibly.
Thank you. And Terry, comments?
Yeah. I, having been on the board for three years, I will reiterate that we have an amazing administration, an amazing staff who oversee our budgets, and so, trust is a big part of stakeholders, and we have hard, hard conversations. We do have hard conversations. I think one of the best things we've done in the last three years was hire a facility overseer. We are a big district. We have a lot of buildings, and for one person to oversee all of it has been a lifesaver, and it removes that responsibility and stress from a superintendent. The one part of the question, we don't do toddler care, so that is maybe a miss. We don't do toddler care. We don't do daycare. That is a new program, our early childhood program, and that's a preschool. So, you know, toddler, it's not care, it's a school. Believing heavily in the earlier quality, high-quality preschools has its payoff in lower dropout rates, higher graduation rates, higher literacy. But I believe that we are good stewards. We are excellent stewards of our resources, and we're always looking to see where we can better save. But I've been very proud to be on the school board and thank the board members for their good stewardship and transparency.
All right. Thank you. Our next question, "Every board meeting, there is a closed session. Some board meetings are held at times inaccessible to the public. As a board member, how would you advocate for transparency and communication?" We'll start with Kelsey.
That's a great question. One thing I have noticed as I follow along with the board meetings is they used to write what they were going into executive session about, and that's no longer on there. I think that would be helpful to the public to know at least what's being discussed. And honestly, I would have to defer to Terry or people who are on the board on how we can make this process more feasible for everyone to attend.
Thank you. Terry?
We do say at the end of the open session that we're going into executive session based on the codified law, and so, I guess if people want to know what that is, they can look that up. But for a lot, what happens in executive session, based on the law, we can't come back after all of those and share what's happened. If it's a personnel situation or anything, we don't, we don't share that. The other part of the question was the time of the meeting?
An accessible time is...
Accessibility for people to attend.
Yeah.
It seemed 5:15. I mean, we don't, we could always be open to talking more about that. 5:15 has seemed to work for a lot of people. The rooms get pretty full, but I know, as a board, we're always open to further conversation about if a better time would work for more stakeholders. We would certainly discuss that and be open to that.
Are the board meetings televised also on YouTube?
Yes.
Okay. So, there is access there.
Yeah. And the agenda is always out for anybody to go and see and follow along.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next question, Cassie, I guess you get to answer that first if you'd like.
I just want to echo that, obviously, we want transparency and collaboration to be a part of our process. When you can, there are certain things that legally the board can't share, but I am so excited that the school board and city council has started things like coffee with them, and so, making sure that those events happen frequently and at different times so they are accessible. We serve a lot of different families in Brookings, and we need to meet them where they're at. Also, using things like social media, maybe looking at, sometimes those agendas can get kind of long if there's a way that we can alternate summarizing them, but I know that having, from running Play, family and community engagement is what makes it so successful. So, finding any of those gaps and sharing with the community in different ways so we can meet families that have different schedules would be great.
All right. Thank you. We have a new question here, and I'm going to kind of rephrase it just a little bit. We've already discussed a little bit about the Board of Education or the Education Department being folded up possibly. Federal funding for schools may disappear in certain areas. How would you protect special education funding? Terry?
Special education is one thing that I believe our school district does a phenomenal job. Just within the last, in the coming year, we will see a 20% increase of students needing special education. So, it is a very important part of the district, and I believe the school board will do everything we can to protect special ed, given, you know, like I said, it's hard to say now because we don't know really what's going to happen with the funding and where it will go. So, I just say kudos to our district right now and our special ed program for what they do. You know, you don't know what you don't know. And one of our granddaughters is a student in the special ed program. When she was three years old, she was, became part of the early childhood special ed program at Dakota Prairie. And I've always heard special ed's important, but until your family is impacted by it. And so, it's, we do amazing. That is one of the bright spots in our district, and I would do everything to protect that in whatever way we can.
Okay. Thank you. Cassie?
So, working at Play Tutoring Center, special ed is obviously very close to my heart. As I said, 25% of our students in Brookings School District are on IEPs for a variety of reasons. I see a lot of those kids in my spaces. Things like dyslexia, being on the spectrum, ADHD, all sorts of things lead to students needing those services, and they're very important. We have an incredible staff and an incredible program here at Brookings. We'll need to fight for that funding when possible and make sure that we collaborate and get creative because that is not a program that we can let suffer at all. And a public school's job is to service every student that comes through those doors and especially our most vulnerable population. So, making sure that that, we fight for that funding, but also, if we're going to lose it, that we get creative and collaborate and find grants and funding when possible.
Thank you. Kelsey, comments?
I will echo more of the same. That is a huge need in our school. Like I said earlier, President Trump has claimed that the useful functions will be preserved in full, and I think it's our duty to make sure we're contacting our local legislators to make sure that it's not just a political statement, but a promise. I've had a lot of discussions with staff at the school, with Dr. Schultz, about my time at the district. One of the things I noticed was that we had a high number of turnover in those behavior tech, teaching assistant positions, and that's very difficult for that population of our most vulnerable learners. We need to dedicate a certain amount of money towards training and towards retaining those people so that there's not that amount of turnover. But I agree with my friends up here, it's very vital, and we need to work hard to make sure it's maintained.
All right. Thank you. Our next question is, "If elected, would you support K-5 schools as the district considers updated boundary changes? Why or why not?" And we'll start with Cassie.
So, we definitely need to stay open to it. We are still in the process of getting community input for that. We are a growing district, and the inevitability of needing another elementary school is really our reality. I also work with a lot of families who have students in our elementary schools, but then also a student in our intermediate school, and the challenges that that creates for transportation and their days, but also just I so often see the transition, another transition to another school is really difficult for my students. I've worked with over 300 students in the Brookings School District in the last 10 years, so I'm definitely open to seeing what the community input is and as we continue to research that, but I definitely think it's something we need to further research, and I think it's a good option, and if it best serves our students and it also is fiscally responsible, so we don't need to be building another school. I think it's a good option.
Thank you very much. Kelsey?
I agree with that. I think it's something that we need to be open to exploring. However, we need to even see if it's feasible. Is Camelot able to do that? Are there other needs of our district that we need to address first? I have had a lot of discussions with parents about, just like Cassie mentioned, that transition. Is that transition hard, to have a transition to intermediate and then to middle school? The feedback that I've gotten is actually quite positive, that they think that that make, they make the transition to middle school a lot easier for their children. So, I think we have to have a lot of important discussions and make sure that we get a lot of community engagement on this subject.
Thank you very much. Terry, would you have a comment?
I agree with everything said. We're just getting right, ready to do boundary discussions right now as a board, to collaborate with parents and families, and so, once the boundary discussions get going, I think it's really exciting that we're a part of a district that's always open to saying, "Yeah, let's look at this. Let's weigh the pros and the cons of this." Because, like, yeah, like Kelsey said, there are a lot of families that love the Camelot model, that it has worked great. There are also families that say it would be great to have all of our children at one school, just because of drop-offs and pickups and trying to navigate all of that. So, I think it's exciting, and anytime you're always looking ahead and configuring things and you get families involved and parents and other community members, I look forward to it. What will happen? We don't know, but it's always exciting to have a conversation instead of just saying, "No, we're not going to do that." I do agree that we need to seriously look at Camelot, if, how much funding could, would have to be expended to turn that into a great school.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question that was submitted to the chamber is, "Do you believe the district needs to ask the public for an opt-out for additional funding for district programs? Why or why not?" We'll start with Kelsey.
Absolutely. I think, I think anytime that we are managing taxpayer dollars, we should go to the community and get their input. I think it's very important to discuss the needs, make sure that we're being transparent with what we're using that money for, and make sure that we're being a voice for the community. sure that we're being a voice for the community.
Thank you. Terry, your comments?
I agree completely. As a minister and asking people to give, we know that people have different pockets, and they give to different things. And what motivates some people isn't for somebody else. And so I think absolutely, when we have needs, and we have wonderful, this is a wonderful community. They give, they step up, and you go and ask. And those who are passionate and feel this is something they can get behind, they will. And so I absolutely agree that that's something we should do.
Thank you very much. Cassie?
I agree. As someone that works in nonprofit, we often have to collaborate, and we serve the community. And this community is so deeply dedicated to education. And part of the reason my husband and I decided to stay here, you don't often see two people that went from wanting to be a lawyer and an engineer to education and nonprofit, deciding to stay in South Dakota. As we said, we don't always have the best pay and the best resources, but something about this community and the way we rally behind one another, and the way we rally behind education was really special to us, and it's kept us here for over 10 years. So when we have those discussions, we absolutely need to involve this community because we're deeply invested in education here in Brookings.
Thank you very much. We have, we've got room for probably more questions if you have some. Please submit and bring them up to somebody. Leanne, I think, is collecting those, so please put some up if you'd like. These guys are really good at keeping short answers, so it works great. All right, next question is, some perceive, I don't know who some is, that with increased class sizes, more disciplinary issues, and lack of support for parents and teachers and support staff, there's an overall problem with school district culture. What would you specifically do to hold leadership accountable for improving conditions? And we will start with Terry.
That's a tough question, because I think, like I said earlier, learning what a school board does and what they don't do. I can't, you know, how we manage class size is not something a school board does. Holding administrators responsible is not something a school board does. We support our superintendent, and the superintendent oversees the administrators. I would say that I think school discipline is getting harder. And I, all the time, have a shout out for our teachers that have to deal with so much more than I think, now, teachers have always, my parents taught, had to deal with a lot. But classroom discipline is a struggle and something that always needs to be on our radar. But as far as school districts specifically managing class size and holding principals, administrators accountable, I personally view that as not something the school board handles, but entrust to our superintendent, and we evaluate the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Cassie?
I just want to echo what Terry said. A school board's main job is policy, so making sure that we don't have any gaps in policy. It is our superintendent and then the rest of our administrators and teachers' jobs to enact those things. But if we can update our policy and also provide as much training as possible, the teachers, but also the TAs and the behavior techs in those rooms are working so hard. And through my work at Play, I get to work with a lot of those students that are struggling with behaviors in the classroom, and they don't typically struggle with them at Play, because we have a policy that addresses that behavior issues are usually a need being unmet or a skill gap. So if we can talk about why these behaviors are on the increase, what needs aren't being met, and what skills are missing, and update our policy, and if it's not something that the school board can directly influence, just have those conversations and make sure that that training is available, because those are tough jobs. And teachers and TAs and behavior techs want to keep those students safe and make sure that they're getting the best education possible. And they do that best when they have the most update, evidence-based training.
Thank you very much. Kelsey?
Yeah, I would concur with both of them. It's, I have spent a little bit more time in the school since my son has been there, and it was an eye-opening experience for me to see some of the behaviors that are happening there. It's just very important to have those policies in place, to follow those policies, and to continuously review them to make sure that we have something in place for the teachers to follow. I think it's important to find a way to get parents engaged. I don't think parents realize the behaviors that they're dealing with at the school. I think we need to find ways to get them in our schools to see that, and to maybe take a little bit of accountability, too. It's not our teacher's job to parent. So we need to find our parents step up in that role, too.
Let me turn the mic back on. Thank you very much. All right, we've got a couple of questions that have been asked or presented. Give me a second to look it over here. All right, I'll go with this one. What are the current, where is a current educational gap you see in the school district, and how would you work to overcome those gaps? And we'll start with Kelsey. Or excuse me, Cassie?
Confusing with Kelsey and Cassie.
We'll get it right.
It's very close. So literacy is a huge part of what I do, and we've already started to address that in the Brookings School District by committed to, by committing to the science of reading, which is a structured way of teaching versus a balanced way of teaching. So many of us were taught to read, if we don't know the word, look at the picture and guess. That's not actually teaching our kids how to read. Science of reading is evidence-based, and it is best practice. We've already committed to it. And literacy is a part of everything our students do. It's not just their reading scores. They can't read their tests, instructions. Think about how often you're having to read in your day-to-day life. So addressing those literacy rates, and when you look at states that have committed to science of reading, the rates at which the literacy rates jump are incredible. So addressing literacy will address our school more holistically and meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. Now, Kelsey, your comments?
Yes. Can you repeat just the second part of the question there?
What would actually be your priorities for the district for the next three to five years? Whoops, that's the next question.
That's not it.
I already threw this one away. How would you work to overcome any current educational gaps you see in the school district?
Okay, I think a big part of that is, we've had a lot of discussions about this, that it is a spectrum, right? And we need to make sure that we're serving all students. But the most important thing that we need to make sure with that gap is that we're not taking it from here down here to close that gap. We need to find a way to serve all students without taking the higher learners down. And that needs to be through collaboration with our community, with our teachers, and with our administrators.
Thank you. Terry?
I would echo the literacy. Aliteracy, we know, like, just like Cassie shared, to integrate the science of reading into all curriculum is what our superintendent now is really enforcing. And that even starts now with our early childhood programs. If we can start, like, data shows literacy at a young age has multiple benefits and payoff. So I agree completely with the literacy and getting behind that. Another gap that I've seen our students, our administrators working so hard on is the chronic absenteeism. Once the COVID exploded, chronic absenteeism has been a problem all across the United States and continue. Our administrators are doing a phenomenal job on working at curbing that and reining that in. But that is another issue I don't think people really realize. And so those two, and then also the, I would say, bringing in the gaps between the different demographics academically.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll give you a little preview of the next question. We'll hit it again. What do you think should be the priorities of the district for the next three to five years? We'll start with Cassie.
Thank you. So the priorities of the district, I think, are outlined very well in the four pillars of our district, and they kind of go along with my platform points as well. Brookings needs to be a great place to learn, a great place to work, a great place to collaborate, and a responsible district. So anything that we do in the next three years needs to fall under that. We need to make sure it's a great place to learn. We need to take care of our students' academics, but also their mental health and their well-being. It needs to be a great place to work. We know what we're asking these staff, and I am in those schools every single week seeing what we're asking of them. And we need to make sure that they have the support, resources, and training that they need. A great place to collaborate. Here in Brookings, we know that the collaboration between different organizations is key. And whether it's teachers collaborating with one another or collaborating with outside organizations that can provide extra resources, and then a responsible district. Making sure our dollars are best serving every student that walks through those doors and that we're accountable to our community.
Thank you very much. Kelsey, comments?
Yes, the proficiency rates need to be our first and foremost thing that we address. When we talk about the reasons that people are maybe choosing alternative options, that was one that was scary for me. As a parent, you hear those numbers, and you do want to look at alternative options. So we need to focus on that. We need to focus back on the core education, get those numbers up, which, as Terry said, our superintendent and administrators are already focused on. We need to look at some of our big ticket expenses down the road. As was stated, we went over budget on those schools, and while they are needed, we have a lot of other needs in the district, too. We have needs at the high school. We have needs at the CTE building. So we need to work hard to make sure that we're making responsible decisions that are going to directly support our staff and our students.
Thank you very much. Terry?
Yes, I really believe, you know, every student... Every, I really feel like I don't need it. I have such a loud voice.
I forget to.
Yeah. Every student can learn, just not on the same day and the same way. And I think we need to continue to remind ourselves that, and focus continually on our literacy is so, so important. I also think over the next three to five years, as a district, we're going to have to look at technology and how AI is changing education and changing everything. You just think about where we've been even three years ago. AI, what was AI? And so we're talking three to five years to really look at the challenges that technology is going to bring. I also see our early childhood programs, they're very new, and a lot of the community isn't fully aware of what's happening there. But to continue to build those and promote those, I think that would be something that will be very important for our district in the next three to five years. I also agree that we want to see continual work on getting our graduation rates higher. We can always work on graduation rates higher. And then I also think another issue is our multilingual learners. Right now, we have 29 languages between our six buildings.
All right, thank you very much. It's often fun trying to keep track of which one goes next. As you can see, I've got a scribbled cheat sheet here. You probably won't know if I messed it up. Anyway, here we go. Another question is, does the school board review the traffic problems at school start times, and do you have any suggestions on improvement? And we'll start with Terry.
We do. Yes. No, we do. And there is a study right now looking at staggering, staggering start times. I was, I have five children, and we had children in grade school, middle school, and high school. And so I know about what it's like to try and stagger those times. So we do look at that. We are currently looking at that to see what could help families and parents that have multiple drop-offs.
Thank you. Cassie?
Yes, I have had discussions with our school board members recently about that. When I first started Play, I had a lot less students, and I was working at BCPMP, and I used to have to go pick up all students from different schools. And often I have IEPs at the end of the day, and the traffic, I know, is very overwhelming. I also have students that are trying to get to Play, and I think staggering those times would be incredible for the schools, safety, those families, and then after-school programs as well. So I think that's a great first step to address that problem.
Thank you. Kelsey?
Yeah, again, here transparency and collaboration is key, right? We talk about having parent input. When those surveys come out, then we need to answer them. Because, like Cassie's situation, is entirely different than mine. I have one child that goes to Midary. So to me, it doesn't really make a difference. But we need to hear from all the people and make sure your voice is heard. So we need to push participation in those surveys.
All right, thank you. We have another new question here from the audience. Basically, I'm going to try and put this together here. Yeah, I'm going to combine it all if I can. Faced with funding issues, Bobcat Academy has proven that older students need support as their statement. Arts, music, language, creative arts. Do you support these programs, and how will you support them as funding shifts? Cassie, we'll start with you, Cassie. Cassie? I'll get it right.
It's fine. Extracurriculars are so important to our district. And as we look at the list of things that are offered in Brookings, we have a lot of incredible programs. Not only do we have a lot of incredible things that are offered through Brookings, but there are a lot of club sports and resources here in Brookings. Obviously, if someone is really passionate about an extracurricular, we would love to add that when funding is available. But we need to make sure the engagement is there and that our dollars are positively affecting as many students as possible. So we also need to look to outside sources and collaboration. We have the Children's Museum, we have these club sports, we have so many incredible programs here in Brookings. So making sure we collaborate with them and then have conversations with families about what resources are available here in town. So if we can't offer them as a school district, if we don't have those funds, making sure that we collaborate, because there are a lot of amazing things available here in Brookings.
Thank you very much. Kelsey?
Yeah, we need to make sure that we're looking at all of these activities, whether it's sports, or art, or music, and make sure that they're getting the funding that they need. I had a conversation with a middle school teacher, and they were talking about sheet music. They didn't have enough in their budget for sheet music. Well, that's pretty detrimental to those students who want to participate in that. So we need to, we need to look at all those activities each year and make sure that we're allocating the funds needed for them to continue to be successful.
Thank you. Terry, comments?
Yeah, what's there, could you repeat the first portion about Brookings Plains Academy? Is that in there, too, or no?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yes. Just to support Brookings Plains Academy as an alternative for students who, like I said, every student can learn, just not on the same day and the same way. And the Brookings Plains Academy has been very beneficial for a number of students in our district. Fully support what both of my friends have said, that we do need to fully embrace all activities. We have a phenomenal fine arts, from concerts to bands. And we just recently began, will be beginning, an esport. And so that's something new in our district. So you never know, like, the question three to five years, I don't know three years ago, what's an esport, you know? So there are always changes coming up, and to fully embrace and encourage all of our students to get involved.
Thank you. We are getting out of time here. We need to get into the closing statements. And I think this next question would be your greatest priority as a board member, and I think you can all address that in your closing statement. So we're going to start our closing statements, everybody. We're going to start with Kelsey.
All right, well, to, it was our greatest, what did the?
Well, it's not a question. It's your closing statements. Yeah, greatest priorities are probably in your closing statements.
Yes. Obviously, we discussed my greatest priorities, and that is the academic proficiency. We're going to focus on that. Fiscal responsibility with my background, with my previous assistant business manager for the school district, I have firsthand experience in navigating this budget, this school system. That's very important. I've had a lot of discussions throughout the last couple weeks of people who are very concerned about making sure our tax dollars are working for them. And then transparency with the public. I really want to work on getting parents and community members engaged. I think that will support our administrators, it'll support our staff, and ultimately support our children. And as far as being an effective board member, my number one job is to support our staff. They need our support navigating, you know, we've talked about that. A third of our students are on IEPs, a third of our students are English as a learned language. They're balancing things now that 20 years ago they didn't. They need our support in that. And as long as we can support them, then they can be the best support for our students, and in turn, our students will have the best chance for success. So, again, I want to thank everyone for being here today. I want to thank all of our sponsors for putting it on. I think it's really important for engagement. And then I want to reiterate, last local election, we had a 16% voter turnout. If you want your voice heard, please get to the polls. Early voting starts on Monday, the 24th, Election Day, the 8th. And I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Thank you for being here today. And I have, it has been a true honor to be on the board these last three years. I have learned a lot, and I'm still learning. And one of the biggest things I've learned is how to listen, to understand, instead of listen to reply. That's a huge difference. And so the learning and continue to learn. I am totally in belief that one of our main jobs as a school board is to support our superintendent. And as a supporter of the superintendent, then she, whoever a superintendent is, then supports the administrators and the teachers. To support teachers, administrators, superintendents, and students. I believe another priority for me, I've said it many times, is literacy.